But today is really about finding some of the economic fundamentals and I've got some great co-conspirators here today. We've got Ryan James, who is from Profile ID. And one of the things I like about Profile ID, they're actually about giving information to make those informed decisions. And he'll take you through a whole range of data. When I first was reading it, I'm going, wow, wow, what does this mean? What does this mean? And you will have those questions. And what I want you to try and do is how can you go about answering them? We won't have all those answers, but together we can try and think about ways to address some of the things that are happening and have been happening for a while and some of the things that have started to happen more recently. So Ryan will take you through that. He's a social scientist. He's got a whole bunch of things that I'm sure will be insightful. And then, who is Catherine? Probably just sitting with it. And then Catherine Gray, who's with the team here in the Economic Development section, uses a tool called Spend Map. Have people heard of Spend Map? It gives some really good data and information, particularly around the visitor economy. So it sort of looks through a narrow lens at some of the data. And you will see that there's some consistencies between what Ryan's presenting and some of the things that Catherine's doing. But because the visitor economy is such an integral part of our economy, we thought we'd do a bit of a drill down into that particular area. So enough from me. And if we just welcome Ryan to the podium.
Thank you. Thanks for that introduction. Has anyone here heard of ID or know what ID do? Yep. So for those who don't know, the council engage ID. So that when they do things like their vision work or they're writing some policy or they're responding to requests from businesses, they've got an evidence base to dip into. Yeah, so councils subscribe to ID tools, so they've got an evidence base for decision-making. It's sort of, that's our motto, if you like, an evidence-based decision-making. Most of what I'm going to show you now, you can actually access yourselves in your own businesses. And the idea is that, you know, it's a contest of ideas rather than arguing about the numbers and the source of those. So everyone can access all of this information. I work with lots of councils all over Australia. I'm very familiar with them. I'm from here. I went to Lismore Uni. I'm from Wamba, if you know Wamba down the road. So I do have some particular insights here. At the end, I think we're going to have a Q and A session. So as we go through, take notes if you've got any questions. There'll be some time to answer them, I'm sure, beyond that as well. So that's me. I'm just going to quickly talk about what the tool is for a very brief moment and then get on to some storytelling. I'm going to whip through a whole bunch of slides that are going to have charts and tables. You sort of, it's, I'm going to be telling you a story. If you don't believe me, refer to the charts. This is sort of how we use these things, right? And we encourage you to use data the same way in your own businesses. You're experts in your field and your market. You have an idea, just check with the evidence to make sure that you're right. Like the council, they'll come up with a vision and then they'll use these tools to sort of monitor how they're going with that. The idea is that you use the same, it's not just these tools, there's lots of tools in the world that you can use. But that's what we're encouraging you to do. The last point is actually sort of moot really, because you're in the room of where to find support. You've got some really good support people here at the council. They're my clients. They're not sort of paying me to say this, but they're very, you know, good operators who can help businesses. Their job is to help you, so take advantage of that. So this is what we're trying to do, understand places. There's lots of, I mean, you see on the news, things like commodity prices and all these sorts of things. What we're trying, and there's lots of national data sets and there's some state data sets, but there's not that many local and suburb data sets. And that's where we come in. We've been doing this for a long time, well, 30 years, you know, longish. And that's what our sort of obsession as a business is, helping people at that suburban community level. And we do that by looking at these three different aspects of places. So you've got community, meaning the residential population. I do use a bit of jargon as I go, so forgive me for that. That's, that's, I'm a social scientist, what do you want? Community is your residential population, people who live within the boundary. That's, we look at those people. We can break that down by suburb and look at change over time. Mainly through the census. And we all filled that out, hopefully, or 96.1% of us filled that out properly. And so we all know what's in there, but there's, for a five or 10 minute survey, I know there's been some problems with it from time to time. I don't work for them, but, so you can complain about it. But there's, it's, it's a resource that is so valuable in this country. In fact, there's one, I think it's Finland, they do all that sort of stuff better than most countries because they're a small population. But our ABS people get flown all around Australia to present on our census because it's such a resource. So make sure you dip into that. The economy tool, which is the main thing that I'm dipping into today, we do these sessions in these other areas, but the main thing I'm focusing on is the economy. I'm not an economist. I do work in a team with some economists. We're more just talking about the local economy and industries and workers. That's what we're going to focus on here. And obviously land use brings a lot of that together. We were talking about dwellings and the relationship between housing affordability and incomes of people. All these things are ways that we profile a place that we encourage you to do yourselves because that will help you understand your markets and your access to workers. They're the two main things that it will help you with. But I'm not here to sort of let you know which data you can use, but hopefully I'll give you a story here that gives you a bit more of the context of what's been happening over the last, certainly over the sort of five-year period. And then I've got some slides also since the flood, what's been happening since then. So macro trends. Five or six years ago, we didn't go into this. It wasn't as important, but the world has sort of changed a little bit since then. You've got COVID, but there's a lot of upheaval in the world. We've got wars and droughts and things that are seemingly having a bit more impact at a local area like Lismore. Or, you know, I was in Casino this morning and it was just very easy to link this slide to exact things that are happening on their doorstep, just like we can any small area. It doesn't matter how small you are now in Australia, the world's a much smaller place. So when these things happen, it starts to affect places like Lismore. And particularly in the way that it impacts the nation. So we've got very low unemployment. I expect that some of you are finding it hard to find workers. We've got household costs going up. Let's look at some of these things. This here is a slide that, I'm starting off with the boring. It'll be more exciting as they go on, but I've stolen this one from the ABS directly. This is population change in Australia since September 02. We can see here COVID. COVID hits. Now, population has been the number one source of growth in Australia for 10 years at least. Pardon me. Add people, consumption goes up. And we've got more workers to help service the baby boomers and more 25 to 35-year-olds to raise our fertility rate. There's all these reasons why, they don't really tell us why, but as demographers, we can figure these things out. But COVID comes, the doors shut, and suddenly we need to, you know, our economy struggles as well because we don't have that extra input into our economy. It's only just now that we're expecting that to, that it's got back to pre-COVID levels. But we keep a very close eye on this. Especially seeing all, you know, everyone's businesses and the economy and the community and housing and land use are all impacted by the population and population change. I mean, as we know, things like education and health are the big growth areas in Australia. And, you know, for those to grow, you need more people. They're not, it's not as simple as better productivity, you need to, you need those extra people. We understand the last budget. We think that, from what we can see, the target is about 400,000 people coming in from overseas the next couple of years. I think that's each year, the next couple of years. That's higher than it's ever been. That's great news for people who are looking for workers. That's great news for people who are looking for consumption to go up. It's also can put strain on things as well. This is the context that we all need to, you know, we're all operating. There's also this, you know, us as households are also dealing with this and us in search of customers are dealing with this. Inflation. And that's absurd. What's going on? Last quarter, I think there were some of the more luxury cars sold in Australia than we've sold in a long time. So there's a certain cohort that's got lots of money and I wish I'd stopped spending because it's making my mortgage go up. So please stop buying luxury cars if you've got the money. But it's very, it's sort of, there is, this is sort of one story, but when you pull it apart, expenditure by age, that's an interesting thing. Too, I haven't done that in this presentation, but certainly knowing the age of your own customers is an important input into understanding it. The most important thing, we've all got one, an age. If I say I cater to 18-year-olds or I cater to 70-year-olds, it's a very easy sort of thing to get your head around and start tailoring your marketing services towards. But then we've got this one too, mean weekly housing costs. 2001 was about $350 a week for a mortgage, you know, owners with a mortgage. Now it's about $500. That's a big jump up. So this is, these are the people we're expecting to then spend money in our businesses. So it's within that context that we're, that we all operate. And the good news is that we are expecting that population growth to return and that's going to have an impact here. We just need, you know, services and infrastructure to keep up. And a lot of that's got to do with the development communities, not so much council or government or anything like that. That's actually private business that provide a lot of that sort of access. But it's a partnership, right? But the good news is that the consumers are coming back to Australia. Your population story is a little bit more, shall we say, stable, okay? Stable. It's almost like an optical illusion. Is that changing at all? It's hard to see, right? I think it was about the same when I was here at uni in 98. I don't know, you know, like it hasn't, it just hasn't moved. But it's a little bit like, you know, the duck on the pond, you know, there's still plenty of activity going on. This is what we're going to pull apart. This is just a bit of that population and community story. I don't go as much into that as we could. But this is just drilling into the top here, just the change per year. You know, whether it goes up or down in 101 year or down in 100 the next year, I don't really think that has a big difference for yourselves. You know, I think that to call that stable, we do see here that there has been a drop. That it's larger than it's seen, you know, in 20 years. A drop by a lot? Probably not. I mean, as, as sort of an expert in this field, I wouldn't think there's anything to worry about. The thing, I mean, worry is not the right word, but the thing that I'm focusing on here is that it's not higher. I'm a growth person though, like that's just my view, right? How do we change that? Is that part of the vision? I don't know. Like this is, these are all things that, you know, you all have a different view on and share those views with your customers. And that's, having a view on these things really helps. Where in the last 12 months, the ABS have started to give us a breakdown of this bar here. We can't assume this happens every year, but this is, this is what's part of that duck on the pond, the duck feet. There were 61 people born more than died, right? So that's, we call that natural increase. There's a lot more born, a lot more die, but that's the net growth. You saw 139 people come from overseas directly here, but this is where you're tending to lose people. People, they come to Lismore, then they move, move out.
Is that 22 in all the flat or?
Yes, no, that includes one quarter. Yep, so that includes, that's to June 30. Of 2022, yes. Yeah, so most of this stuff I'm going to show you is to June 2022. And then at the end, there's sort of some slides to give you some more information since the flood. What I'm, what I'm trying to be careful to do is, is to give you the context of the economy pre-flood because that's, that's sort of the real, real, I mean, I don't even have the language to really think about what, you know, happened at the time, but we have returned, I won't bury the lead, you have returned to pre-flood levels of employment. So is, is the short view so far? That could be revised from the ABS, but that's what we're thinking so far. When people move out, they're tending to go to other parts of, sorry, go to Queensland. Ever since Expo 88, that's Southeast Queensland has been the number one destination for domestic migration. Actually, one year was Melbourne. But the rest of the time is Southeast Queensland, you know, until, and then they, they tend, people tend to go north and they, you know, could stand by a blue bottle or something and go home again. That does happen. But you gain people from the rest of New South Wales. So you're, you're very strong, attractive other parts of New South Wales, but you also leak out people to Queensland. Why is this important? It gives you an idea of sort of this, your customers aren't the same all the time. They don't just, even if you just sell to the 18-year-old or to the 70-year-old, all the world out there is changing, right? And this is just part of, this is telling part of that story, keeping on top of that. Let's have a quick look at these people, net gain. So what we're, this is net gain and loss. Where are you losing people to? Richmond Valley, Brisbane Gold Coast. So you can see a lot of those Queensland ones on there. It's not just the Goldie, it's not just Brisbane, it's a mix there. When we look where you're gaining people from, Byron, Sydney and Melbourne, Melton is in Melbourne, Inner West, you know where that is? Casey's in Melbourne. And they're, they're coming a long way, these people to move to Lismore. So that's interesting. So understanding those places will actually help you understand your new markets. When we break it down by age, it tells us probably a predictable story here. We lose 80 to 24-year-olds. Used to be called the powerhouse nightclub when I lived here. And it's just not enough to keep these 80 to 24-year-olds sticking around. And that's sort of the nature of regional Australia, right? This is not, and we used to assess, and how can we stop them from leaving? And now we want them to leave and come back with kids and capital and ideas and productivity and all these things. And they are doing that. And you're gaining the 35 to 44-year-old and the 40, anything above the line you're gaining. This is not people who are aging in places, not all ages. These are just people who are moved between the last two census periods. So it's like that mobile population, that middle one that I was talking about, that middle one. You know, where I had the truck, said moving on, that one. So why would it be that 35 to 44-year-olds and 5 to 11-year-olds are coming here? Lifestyle, family, housing potentially, mate, because remember this is five years up to 2021 too. So there was, you know, it was a different housing stock situation and affordability situation as well. So yeah, just, just hearing you yell outside of those things then, like, that's exactly right. It's about, it's about crafting this story about people from these numbers and trying to feel, what's going on? What's the motivation? Why would that then? You know, this is an easy one, ain't it? Why are they leaving? Well, they're chasing their life, you know, they're just moving on, you know, like, that's, that's the life stage then, right? If we just look at where they're going, this is just immense data. This is that 80 to 24-year-old, where they're going to. Brisbane, Gold Coast again, Melbourne, Logan, Melbourne again, Melbourne. A lot of people are moving to Melbourne. There's coffee down there, footy in there. And then where are they coming from, 35 to 44? Again, it's the sort of similar to what I've already told you, it's just a bit more detailed, diving in a bit further. I mean, in fact, on the live tour, you can look at just the most recent year, every year the ABS do this, we publish on this site. So yeah, Byron, Ballina, but then Sydney, Brisbane, Inner West, these are people coming in. The net numbers aren't huge, but the in-migration, considering you lost, what was 150 people last year? When you start to think of this in-migration, it has a big impact on a place that is otherwise stable. It's sort of that churn makes it bigger. They're different people who are moving in to the ones moving out. Employed residents, now we're talking about of those people who live here, how many have a job? It's sort of, it could be, for the uninitiated, it takes a little bit of explaining. So you've got jobs here and they can be filled by anybody. It doesn't matter where you live. These are people who live within Lismore and they could work anywhere. This is just saying, the people who are coming in and the people who live here, how many have a job? And that's higher at June 30, 2020 than it's ever been. So jobs are relatively healthy. And see, this is a very different shape to your population. Your population was just dead flat. But this is saying that you've got more people with a job here. So what does that mean? Again, I think that exacerbates this story about finding workers. Do I just, is, is anyone here finding it hard to find workers? Okay, great. Anyone who just assumed this, just because everyone else is here for feeling it, but that's some confirmation.
Full-time workers?
No.
So multiple jobs?
Could be, could be, yep. So multiple jobs. It couldn't be. This is, one resident is counted once. Each resident is counted once, sorry, yep. We do have jobs and FTE in other areas, but this is just the employed residents. This is just checking that, you know, there's a lot of lifestyles that people are chasing when they move here, okay? And it seems that the most recent growth has been people with jobs. That's the lifestyle that people are chasing when they're moving here, which is a positive sign of activity. That's, yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair to say from what we've seen so far in these slides. We don't know exactly the motivations from these lines on this page. And some of you will be in that group. Some of you will have moved here in the last whatever and will be employed. But then when we look at yourselves compared to Northern Rivers, it tells us an interesting story about what we call the industry mix or the structure of your local economy. I say this is at June 30, 2022. It's actually an average over the four quarters for the data nerds in the room. And that's, so we could take out some seasonality for that. That means that the number's a bit more reliable. It's not just a snapshot. Oh, the census is just like, whatever happened on the census night is what we report. This is much more about looking at the total over the year and accounting for the peaks and troughs. One in five jobs in healthcare. I think we all knew that healthcare was strong here, but did everyone realise it was like one in four jobs in healthcare? I mean, that's significant. So healthcare is a population-based sector. For it to grow, you need to have an extra person to grow, to deliver the service generally. But also, you know, it services the high population. So if you're, how is it growing? It's because you're servicing the region. And in fact, this region performs very well, and when I say this region, Northern Rivers is the example I use all around the country for regionalism done well. So like Lismore's got a great base hospital and Ballina has good, you know, retirement villages. And Byron does great, you know, like lighthouses and, and Dwee does great greenfield development, right? I mean, we all, we all dip into these different things, but knowing that your, sort of your role in the region, I don't have that much more about your role in the region, but just getting your head around that can really inform your business activities as well. I mean, it's the age of, I'm not here to really give you advice, but you know, it's like, if someone's doing it, does that mean you avoid doing it? Or maybe they've demonstrated there is a demand, so you can, you can tap into that and that's your business decision to make. But these figures can show you those sorts of, whether it is happening or not. Again, on the live side, if you intend on using this study, you can click on all these lines and it shows you, it explodes it or shows you the disaggregated industries. What do I mean? Because I mean manufacturing, it says food product manufacturing, wood manufacturing, metal manufacturing. And it gives you the subcategories. So you can find your own more specific industry in there. What else is interesting here? Anyone find anything particularly interesting in that before I tell you what I think?
My, my comment is that has not really changed. We've always been in the, what I guess the last 15 years that a council have been looking at that, healthcare and social assistance was the bigger sector. I'm not sure if education and retail have swapped or stayed around the same, but they've always been high as well.
How do we determine accommodation and around the region and food?
Yeah.
Where we promote ourselves as a food destination, yet we don't have any resources today. So we kind of need accommodation to back that up.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's it. That's good observation, yep. Yeah, that's something here. And construction load too. There's a lot of constructions being on the Northern Rivers, I suppose. And I'll move on, actually. I think that's, that will make it close there. But this is our, remember I mentioned how we've got the employed residents? And then we have, so there are people who live here and they have a job, they could work anywhere. That's the light green, the dark green are local jobs. And so what I'm looking at here is, do we have jobs that match our residents? Right? So this is, this tells us there's a job in healthcare in Lismore. This tells us that there's someone who works in healthcare who lives in Lismore. So there's a gap. We've got to import people. Just like at the beginning, the federal government's importing people to raise consumption. Well, you're importing people to fill your demand for health services. I mean, it's not hard to guess where they're coming from, Ballina, which is from Valley, Byron. And they're not, they're not coming that far. We can do some analysis on wages here compared to other areas and how easy it is to attract people. Well, I don't do that here, but that's some ways that we use some of the key working issues. This is interesting too. Education is doing the same. So these two strong industries, they just net have to, have to pull people in. Everything else is pretty close. There's only, there's none. The accommodations too, I suppose, we've got people leaving, but it's only very small. But in your search for workers, you know, it gives you an idea about where people are coming from and going to by sector. This is unemployment rate. You have to be careful. I mentioned like at the beginning how they show these things on the news and stuff. They have to be careful because this shows the resident population. It's not about workers and business, actually. This is about people who live here with unemployment rate. This is a different thing. People go, oh, our economy's doing really well. But a place like here where 50%, let's say of your, I couldn't get the exact number, that's just a guess off my head, but of your health workers coming in, that's, because that population is different, your workers, we're only measuring one here. And often if you're looking at the health of an economy, you might want to look at the workforce more and payroll and jobs more so than the residential population, I'll leave that with you. But also, I don't know what happened here. So this is, this is in the region, there's few that have got this same phenomenon. We don't own this data, like we just get the unemployment rate and publish it on the site. And from time to time, we've gone bad. It's generally, you know, it's a known undercount, the unemployment rate. But often you can go back to them and ask them the questions and they don't really know either. Sometimes with unemployment, it's a survey-based thing, but we do know that this convergence of low, of low unemployment, which forever, right down to here, we've wanted this to be as low as possible. And now, we don't really know, no one can tell me what the percentage is of full employment, but we're below it. We're basically considered full employment at the moment. That said, this is where people get their income from in Lismore. So yes, you've got more and quicker with a job here than ever. That's what that employed residence thing showed us. But this is not strictly 20% of people, this orange one. This is, we get every dollar that's an income. And we look at the total and we look at what percentage is the total by dollars. It's not by household or individual. And compared to regional New South Wales, which already has a fair chunk, you've got a fair chunk of people on cash benefit. So that's people sort of in a variety of different places. They could be on the dole or job seeker. Could be the age pension, disability, there's a whole range of things there, but you've got a higher proportion. And it seems to have come out mainly of this business income. So less of the learning income from business. It could be that you've got just as many people to run a business from here, but there's just learning less income. So I just, I'll point that out. But in, in America, this is sort of, they sort of consider this an export in a lot of local economic development, which is an interesting take on things. It just gives you an idea again of the cohort of your local market. Now, you mentioned change earlier. Yes, the structure of your economy has been relatively stable and dominant with a few particular things. But in the last 10 years, we've seen, you know, I was going to say all, almost all the growth is in this sector. And if you, if the regionalism wasn't so successful here, this could be a concern. But you guys know what you're good at and you're doing it well, right? That's not to say in the future that some other industry can't do the same thing. Like we don't, we don't want to limit ourselves just from the success of the past. But in the 10 years, you know, that's where the significant growth has been. This is sort of repair and maintenance, if you're wanting what other services is. Or it's, it's either repairs and maintenance or like hairdressing and nail salons and things like that. It's been a bit of growth in, in personal services. But it's interesting to see how dominant those two sectors, I'll get to construction. Businesses, so there's where people register their ABN. And we filter out, well, we know the ABS do, filter out all the family trusts and body courts and things like that. And construct, ignore construction when it comes to registration of businesses. They're just sort of any construction businesses in the room, yep. And, you know, people, you know, register ABNs like they're going out of business. The opposite, so a bit like unemployment is a difficult proxy to use to look at the healthy economy. Construction also has its own sort of ups and downs, so we try not to use it as much as possible when we're looking at businesses because the way that people operate, they can sort of start and close their businesses in construction. The rest are much more stable. And I put this slide here in direct comparison to that one. It's after this one on purpose. These are the jobs that have grown over the last 10 years, but, so we go, oh, our eggs are in, I was going to make an ankle joke, but, you know. Our eggs are in the healthcare basket, but in terms of, these are real people like yourselves that you're in this. You guys are registered businesses where you've been included in here. And it's showing there's a real diversity of industries here. There's a lot of people with putting their hand up to, to register their business. I mean, is that a bricks and mortar business employing a thousand people? Is it just someone who's made redundant, giving it a go with a laptop? This doesn't tell us any of that. Doesn't tell us any of that. We can dig, we can, you know, when we work with the council, we pull apart all these sorts of things. But this is really just showing, so accommodation food, so as we remember, we saw that was low. Well, we've had, in the last couple of years, we've had 25-year businesses spring up on top of the ones that we have there. So part of our challenge in this room of being businesses and economic development sort of support practice is this, is to turn, you know, to just widen the channel at every stage. Get more people registering their business and get those businesses employing people and get those employing people more productive. And, you know, and so on and so forth. And you've got plenty of opportunity here with all these new businesses starting up. This one actually surprised me, financial insurance services, because there was a period here where you had a whole, a lot of those. Anyone in that industry here? Yeah, there was a lot of those, like about two or three, or maybe it was three or four years ago. It was like hundreds sprung up and then they, they didn't last very long. Then they're like, then there was some redundancy or something, I don't know, yeah. Just a quick look at growth here though, just comparing yourselves to the top 10. These are the top 10 growth areas in New South Wales. LGAs, local government areas. You can see this slide is a bit antipathic. That's how I came up with this one. This is from the census. The census is This is from the census. The census is fraught with some weird things. There's an undercount. There's some data issues with it, but it's a good way to do these broad comparisons. And there's sort of two categories here. Has anyone been to Bogan? Yeah, well, contact that Bogan council. Her name is Jenny Bogan. Serious. She doesn't work anymore. But to me, there's two categories that I see. What does anyone else see in that pattern? So what we're saying is there are forty percent more jobs in twenty twenty-one than there were in twenty sixteen. This is a lot, right? Big growth. For me, I see greenfield development, Camden, Mayland, Wollondilly. Yeah, or beach and Bogan's.
What's the A's and the C's?
Oh, they're, it's like Shire and City. It's sort of, I normally would take them out, but I was a bit rushed, sorry about that. But you're here, I think seven and a half percent. So I mean, there's how many councils in, is that worth, is there anyone?
East South.
East South? Hundred and twenty-nine, I think it is. But they change it all the time, I want to say, but it's all arbitrary stuff that us administrative people care about. But seven point five percent, which it's not in the top ten. But unless you're gonna get lots of greenfield or a beach, it's really hard because they've all got that sort of amenity to be top ten. And do you necessarily want top ten? I would suspect that if you've got forty percent growth next year, there might be, you know, there might be some growing rates with that. Conversation for another time maybe. So pulling all this apart down into sort of some headline stats. Two point six billion dollar economy generated by forty-three hundred businesses. That's a good ratio, I can tell you. That's a good ratio. I haven't got benchmarking up here, but I can tell you that there's a lot of value coming out of a relatively small number of businesses and a relatively small number of jobs. Why is it that high? We saw health is actually not that big a generator of value. But construction is, and you had lots of those jobs. Population of forty-four thousand, twenty-two thousand were employed residents, twenty-four thousand were jobs. We often look at the ratio between these three to look at access to workers and transport issues. You know, looking at from the outside, you would think that Lismore was much more self-contained. I.e. wasn't as reliant on the region for workers, when I mean self-contained. And I don't have specific slides on it, but I can tell you by industry, there's lots of, I've already shown you some of those employed residents versus local jobs. There's a lot of churn happening. So you don't know, this is not, this is an eight to middle picture. But this, let's say that's your participation rate. So how many of your residents are employed? That's a very healthy number. Despite the fact that there's so many people on cash benefits, you've still got a very healthy ratio or participation rate. I hesitated because that's not strictly, participation rate's got a formal calculation. That doesn't make the criteria because it's, it excludes under fifteen year olds and over sixty-five year olds. Over sixty-five year olds are considered non-participants in the workforce, according to the federal government and the ABS, right?
Will you have any slides to look at the breakdown of the wage brackets that those people fall into?
I don't have any slides on it, but it is on the live tool. So you can get onto the tool and look at that. Have you got a particular question?
I was in like the breakdown of those employed people with what wage brackets they're actually falling into.
Sure.
Whether that's the lower or the upper end, whether the upper is over the, or the lower end.
We don't do it by industry, I mean by journey to work, we call that. Sorry.
To answer that question, we have a disproportionately low income in all of the categories that we don't want to have it in. And there's a problem with our makeup of our workforce here, in particular around the healthcare sector. Forty percent of people are coming in from outside the LGA. It's a huge increase associated with our numbers driver. But then Lismore itself's income is twenty percent rather than region, New South Wales.
Yeah.
And so that then has massive impacts on disposable income and all of the special.
And attracting workers.
And yeah, this is where the vision piece around Lismore is particularly important.
Yeah. It's a really interesting approach to be like, okay, so let's get these numbers for a minute and start the other way. And what's our, how do we want to live and what do we want to be? I think it's, it's gonna be an interesting piece of work. But I just want to dip into that sort of house, remember I mentioned at the beginning, land use and housing? You have had lots of growth in lone person households and couples without kids. Very few couples with kids, but this is in a five year period between the two censuses. So this just gives you an idea of where your community is changing. And you know, yeah, so we are seeing growth there. Some of these are people who are just living here. This isn't just migrants from other parts of Australia. There's people getting older as well. Maybe you could go from this category to this category where your child moves out as well. So there's a bit of that happening here. But look at this, this just dominates. So and I know this isn't suitable for every business, but I would think that this slide might sort of just inform some of your businesses about, you know, your local market. And it's higher than we're seeing typically in regional New South Wales, that lone person household in Lismore. When we just look at aging, I mentioned we've all got one, I think I said. How have we been hearing about baby boomers? My whole life, I mean, as a demographer, I've been using that phrase. Like sort of this sort of meme was associated with it now. Putting all that aside, now is the time to sort of pay the piper, right? Now's the time we've got to get the health services and the street furniture and the community services and whatever's required for that cohort that we've been preparing for. It's actually like today that we need to service this population. So this is, you know, like in one hand, for service providers, council, they've won with many. This is sort of like, oh no, hands on deck, we've got to deal with this now. But in terms of a market, this is like a really good opportunity. Because if you can tap into this, you know, you've got a cohort that's got, they're the ones buying those luxury cars that I mentioned earlier, not all of them, but maybe not in Lismore. But that's the cohort we're talking about. That thing that we know about baby boomers, about their wealth. It might not be what we typically think in every place, but relative to the rest of the local population, it's pretty predictable. And everywhere you go, that's the thing about age, we're boringly predictable. Once you get to ninety, you're not playing tennis anymore. Interestingly, in the census, something like ninety percent of one-year-olds speak English apparently. You know, like, but we know that, you know, we know they don't. So because at certain ages, we know, and that's goal for if you're doing your marketing, right? It's goal. All this you can look at by suburb. You can actually look at all this information about the residents, the community stuff, not necessarily the economic stuff, down to four hundred households. And you can just point and click, it's very easy. These guys can help you and we can do a session on that another time for that. But this here, this is, what is it called? You know, the pig, the python that swallowed the pig. You know, it's swallowed it and it's just sort of getting smaller and moving through. And it's just persistent. And it's time to roll our sleeves up and service this population. And if that means they're spending their money in our, you know, shops and in our services, that's, well, that's very good. It does mean that our workforce is older. If that's what you've, if you've got an older population, you have an older workforce, right? And we're seeing that you're overrepresented in this fifty-five to sixty-four. These people here, we're, you know, like, we're all, if you live in Lismore and you did on census night, you're in here. If you had a job, if you had a job, if you said you had a job. This is, I think, good news too, where the rest of the country is trying to figure out how to encourage more older people to stay in the workforce or maybe, you know, do ten hours of, or five hours of barista and two hours of driving a bus, I don't know, like. We really, well, when all that population was down during COVID, we tried to find some really novel ways to get older people back in the workforce. And it seems to have been working pretty well.
Looking at that, you could also interpret it like we're obligated to have an older demographic in the workforce. You get a back to select the age structures. The biggest issue that Lismore has in a fifteen year timeline is the, the older demographic you see on the right side of the slide is not followed by anything. And if you look into regional New South Wales, our region, New South Wales counterparts, they have a higher proportion of that thirty-five to fifty-year-old cohort. And so in fifteen years from now, as that older cohort slides off the page, we don't have anything coming through.
Yep.
And so there's an issue around demographics in Lismore that can be, you can look at it away, you can interpret it away.
If I was to sort of game theory that a bit, I would think that eventually, I mean, Byron's rightly or wrongly notoriously sort of like protective of their area. And that's, the people are gonna keep, you know, it's probably to the point where there's more demand than supply.
That issue there is actually the thing that we have to figure out as a city. Because if we're gonna have people coming over the hill from the coast because they can't feel it anymore, but commuting back there for work, then it changes the entire process of what this business community is actually doing.
So there's all, there's like, in that story, like, there's like a million different ways you could go with that about, well, let's, you know, and we use that as an investment attraction opportunity. We use that to inform land use policy and all these things, the data that we can use. And so we go, well, if we did do that, what would the outcomes be? And we're not, and Lismore isn't sort of doing, like, that's part of visioning, I imagine. And we sit there, we think about all these things through. But that said, just that one that I'll follow through is, well, I was talking about this to Richmond Valley again this morning. And it was, and because they don't really see themselves as connected to that Byron demand as say Lismore is. But it's going to happen, it's a matter of when. Although there could be a hundred years, like, that could be the reality, we could all be not here at the time.
Lismore has about twenty-six percent workforce that comes from outside the LGA.
Yeah.
Likewise, it's reciprocated. And so Richmond Valley's got up to thirty percent of this workforce doesn't work in Richmond Valley. We have to work out whether we're gonna be the regional hub for real government. It's a serious issue.
Yep.
The thing, they do sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty. I mean, that's a huge amount of experience that goes there.
Yeah, so what I suspect, this isn't the case with every time I see stuff like this, but what's happening here, I have pulled it apart. This cohort moves to here. Because at twenty, at age twenty sixteen, the reason why we do it in five years is you have to move. You're either born, die, move in or out, or you move along, you're the pig moving along. But they haven't been replaced. They haven't been replaced. Yeah, that's right. You got, that's right.
Do you find out where they came from? That was in one of the original slides.
I did specifically show that group, but they haven't necessarily headed anywhere. They could have just aged here, but there was no one there before them to replace them. Yeah. So I'm thinking that's sort of the story, the age of twenty-four year olds, they leave and they're like, if I, the thing is, this shape is sort of typical of everywhere except for Sydney and Melbourne, maybe Queensland, but, well, because what they've got is big spikes here for that net overseas migrant. They've actually got three groups that got babies that are the children of, let's say thirty-year-old migrants and forty-four-year-old Australian women. There's this one spike and it's a new baby boom that no one's really talking about. It's not as big as this one, but there is one moving through. Then you've got the migrants themselves and then you've got this group, but outside of Sydney and Melbourne. And I mean, I probably am for some sort of incentives to encourage new migrants to move outside of those cities and to have some, I don't know, restrictions, the right word, but some incentives, whatever. I think it'd be good for everyone. That can be controversial sometimes, but two out of every three people, this is only the new thing, like ten years when I say new. Two out of every three people in Sydney, Melbourne were either born overseas or have a parent born overseas. So like, they've got this big spike and that's the, that's the group that is gonna be the new one of these. It's sort of exactly right. Just as we're getting through this, we're like, hang on a second. We've been worried about this group, we actually need more of them. That's, you hit the nail on the head. Lots of growth in qualifications. So if you're a nurse and you need a qualifications, a bachelor degree, but it's not just that. So I just thought, this is sort of like, you're growing, not only have you grown your employed resident population, but also just the human capital, the skills and knowledge of the worker are growing. And society and culture is the largest one. Largest growth in the census period. You know, sort of welfare services and humanities and things like that. But the number one, it's funny because you've got, your number one employer, one in four jobs we saw is in health. And that's where, you know, you've had in ten years, two thousand jobs or something added, which is not insignificant for a place like yourselves. But the number one qualification is management and commerce. So this is more of a teaser than a real story. When you look at it by industry, think about, again, I'm sort of going on a bit about accessing workers, but we've got to think about, do we have the skills and knowledge that are going to help our businesses innovate and deal with customers and do all the things, whatever your vision is, do we have the workforce to deliver on that? And if we don't, where are we gonna get them from? Are they gonna continue to drive from Ballina? Are we gonna get them from Sydney or do we grow it in-house? These are all unanswered questions that you can only answer once you know the state of play, right?
Does that allow for dual qualifications?
Sorry?
Does it allow for dual qualifications?
Yeah, so if you've got two, you'll have one here and it sort of double counts.
That they explain a skew towards management commerce, because quite often somebody will have a construction certificate or diploma and then they'll also get management of course and project management of course.
And in that management commerce, there's a lot of account, a lot of bean counters in there, so.
How many counties?
Yep. I meant that affectionately. I love beans.
That other slide said that the, like, the businesses that are opening up finance and insurance investment is going backwards. So all those people that are getting those qualifications are not opening up your businesses here possibly.
Potentially.
Yes. However, the professional practices are growing and there was a world convention around that time to shut down the insurance and finance.
Oh, that's right. That would have it.
Yes.
Um, so we do forecast the population here. I don't give too much detail here because we haven't revised them since the flood. And we're waiting on new information to come out, new inputs into our model before we do that. But I can tell you that we're expecting the growth to, see how that marginally, but does go up at a steeper gradient than in history? We're expecting this population to go up mainly because of this. We know, the council have told us that there is development in the pipeline, right? But this was, I think, two years ago we did this. So we need to revisit that and, and this is all known development. This isn't like they know secret information, this is just known stuff, right? We probably don't even need to ask the council, but we know that you've got about a hundred and fifty dwellings that you could be adding. And we need to revise this, but let's just, it's just letting you know that you're gonna get some new figures soon. But we do know that it's not just in town. There is some growth in rural Lismore as well. That's, we don't see that changing. That's good news. Some other things about changing, like I said, all this you can look at by suburb and stuff. This is just one that I've kicked the eyes out of. Median household income, it's gone up everywhere. So this is, this is what happens when you grow your qualifications, you generally grow your wages. This is median household income. The reason we use median is if it gets rid of the fat cats and then the people on cash benefits and just looks at it in a much more sort of even way. But incomes are going up here. I just want to make sure that we looked at some of this stuff and it wasn't just about this sort of status story as well. This is again, a bit more of a teaser. This is what our atlas looks like. Get online and look at it. You can drill down into four hundred households here and look at hundreds of characteristics. So you wanna know where eighteen-year-olds are, because that's where you're marking two, click two clicks and you can find them on a map here, right? Let's get on that and use it. We do a whole session on that. I encourage you to get there. But just finishing up here with your population, third twenty-two, this is Jobseeker. Right? So now, I just want to finish off by telling you a bit about post-flood, right? So so far, we've been looking at the sort of five-year range and maybe a number of times, but it came down pretty quickly, the Jobseeker, but it's still at ten percent, which is not ideal. It's not ideal. So that's reflective in that cash benefits thing that we're talking about. But you have been approving things. This is April here today, so just April has just gone. The red are freestanding houses and the grey are sort of high density stuff, but at least when we say high density, we mean like villas and, you know, like just you just have to share a wall, right? And I'm not talking at all rise or anything. So but there are approvals going through. We're talking, what is that? So nearly two hundred dwellings in these couple of years here and then recently, you know, up to that hundred. So they have one or two people each. This doesn't tell us what's coming out of the ground or the realisation rates. And obviously at the moment, there's some, you know, whether it's the economy or whether it's developers or whoever, you know, realisation rates aren't what they're happening historically, but people are getting things approved. So that helps build the capacity for future growth. Now, the dark green is the same as that last slide. You see it's the same shape if you've got really quick eyes. The light green is non-resident. The light green is non-residential, so commercial approvals. All the things that the state government approve and or whatever is not included in this. This is just stuff that goes through council. And it hasn't just been approval of residential. We've also seen the last two years, non-residential approvals, so this is like, we are, we're getting through. We're actually, you know, people are coming to the council, applying for things and council's getting it through. Happening. This is not like, this is not talking about the council activity or, or um, did sound good for council, but that's not my point. My point is that we're building amenity again. Right? We're, we're sort of back building things here. We're just going to keep an eye that the people can afford to actually pay the, the construction to continue, right? And we can, we'll monitor that through, through occupancy certificates, not much to do with this. But this is probably the main one. This is my last slide here. This is a new dataset that the A B S have released and it's payroll. You know the one touch payroll thing now, so you don't need a group certificate, it's all on my gov and it's all directly goes to the, the government. And they released this out of it. We only have it for Richmond Valley hinterland, so Tweed is like the south of the north region. Clarence Valley is the north of the other region and this is everything in between. I can't just give it to you for this more. It's all about that bit between south of Tweed and north of Clarence, right? Um, but it does tell us a lot. Firstly, it is the amount of money spent on payroll, it's out in dollars to wages. Notice every December, there's a dip. December, so that's, that's Christmas. And it just shows you how, look, so many less people, like, they will all take off and, you know, like, don't worry about the money, I would rather have a break. You know? Um, so this is not adjusted for seasons, for seasonality. But let's look at here, because this is where we see a bit of divergence between the yellow and the green. The yellow is New South Wales, the green is our region. The reason why we brought this in the first place is because we wanted to see when people were returning to COVID. That's why the A B S released it as well. You, you, if you look here, if we set it at COVID, you're above COVID. So you're back to pre-COVID levels. And in fact, if you look at the flood, which is what is, it's actually this week here, we see that you're above pre-flood levels. So the amount of pay that's getting paid to your residents is back to higher than it was pre-flood. Right? So that's good, that's good news. But the yellow, it's, it's about one percent higher, I think, than what was pre-flood. New South Wales is ten percent higher. So yes, we've, it's like, do we want, you haven't, you haven't caught up to where you were going to be. You've just sort of jumped back on to where you left off. That's the story.
Can I ask, is that, um, that's taken into account that wages have gone up or is that just on the total of the wages?
It's on the total. It's on the total.
So if that then all went up, if the actual level of wages for each individual was more, then that actually counter out the flat growth?
Uh, it doesn't. I've asked that same question before and the answer I got from our columnists is because this is effectively based on percentages, not values. Yep, and that's how we can compare those two benchmarks. I went back and said, what? And they said, just believe me. Yeah, but if you want me to pull that apart further, you can, yeah. Um, this is not that phenomenon. Yeah, good. I mean, I hope, hopefully we've all got pay rises during this time, but uh, that's not, that's not why New South Wales has gone up by ten percent. So what we want to do is try and how do we foster an environment where you can get back on that train really? And be in line, see how you're so tidied in line with the rest of the state, let's get you back on that somehow. This is where you can find the tools, just Google it. Um, I recommend, you know, you can't break anything, get on, have a drive, but with a bit of support from the council, you know, so it's there, it's a good combo. Um.
It's also on the website.
Yeah, it's also on the council website. So hopefully you got something out of that. It's, it's just trying to set the broad context before the flood as well as some of the stuff after that. Um, I think we've got some Q and A afterwards. Right? Thank you.
Great. Hi, everyone. I'm Cathy Gray. I know many of you. I'm the C B D Activation Officer with the Destination and Economy Team. Um, and so glad to be able to share some insights as counterpoint to that excellent presentation from Ryan. I scribbled down so many insights and really loved the stories that have been shared. And, uh, I'm not going to do so much of the storytelling today because we're going to share, uh, the insights that Spendmap has prepared with us. Uh, but I'm very interested in the opportunities, the questions, um, and what is meaningful to you from this data. So Spendmap, uh, is a platform that we subscribe to that tracks, uh, transactional data from cards across the local government area. It's been developed for local government um, settings and it will anonymously be tracking spending across Lismore area and in relation to other regions. Uh, it's weighted for the non-card transactions, so we do get some insight from that cash economy. And it helps us understand where cardholders are coming from, what types of business they're spending their money at, um, when that is taking place. Uh, we don't go dive into the detail to such granularity because we really need to be careful of, um, that you're not connecting the dots of which particular stores we're looking at. Um, but it does help us look at some great patterns, um, over time. So, uh, we also will look at online spending, um, and what we can learn from that. So we, uh, along with Profile I D, will be tracking this data on a monthly basis. We receive reports about spending in Lismore and it really helps us with our report. And we want to share more of these insights with you, um, to help inform the renewal that we're working on and, uh, the business community. Our first slide here is, um, also looking at Lismore across the local government area and in relation to averages of spending in New South Wales. Um, and we have access to data from pre-COVID in July two thousand and nineteen up until, um, June twenty three at this point. So you can see that Lismore tracks quite, you know, there's some, quite some track of Lismore averages for New South Wales. Um, in two thousand and twenty one, the impacts of COVID, we, we actually performed in some months better than the average for, uh, New South Wales. So we can consider some of the, um, disruptions and the way that, um, that we were able to operate during that time. You can certainly see in, uh, in March twenty two, uh, the impact of the, of the disaster there. Um, but also which will, which we see in most of the analysis across different areas, you can see there was a really strong um, increase in spending over those five months following the floods. Uh, returning to close to, in some cases, um, more than the spending in, uh, same time August twenty one and very close to the spending in August twenty. So it, it gives us some positive signs, um, as has been commented, um, today and, um, in other presentations about Spendmap. There are many factors at play, um, with this spending. Uh, we can also look at some of the categories of spending, uh, across the local government area. Uh, and there's a lot going on this graph, so I'll take some time with it. The yellow section is, uh, looking at pre-pandemic. Um, so that's sort of the closest to perhaps what might be described as normal spending patterns. Um, and then all of the disruptions, the peaks and troughs through the pandemic time. Some strong growth you can see, uh, between, between that pandemic period, the lockdown period that I should say, and the, um, and the disaster in March twenty two. And you can see the, the impact there. So, um, retail spending has been hardest hit. But if we look at the trend lines from July two thousand and nineteen, you can actually see some growth in, uh, in dining and entertainment over this period. It's fifteen percent higher. And you can see a three percent higher for the professional services. We don't break down all of the sectors so with such precision, uh, as the Profile I D, uh, but there is some growth to be seen. And that trend line is relatively flat for the retail sector. So um, we can also start to look at different places to a certain extent. Uh, so Lismore C B D, as you can see, had the biggest impact of the floods. And we've grouped together, um, spending data from North, South, East, Gerard's Hill and, uh, the C B D. And we can compare that to some diverted demand that you can see in Gennellabah, for instance, or perhaps in Nimbun. So, uh, again, uh, a story of the floods, you can see in the spending patterns, um, but also some sign of growth. Um, I think we had some registrations from Nimbun. It's, um, it's good to see some of those patterns. What may not come as a surprise to you is that Thursday and Friday are busiest days, um, on average spending across the local government area. And that, um, the weekends and earlier in the week, um, by and large have less spending in, uh, in Lismore. We can't, I can't talk so much to compare that to our neighbours, for instance. Um, we, we're not able to look at the neighbouring data, but we can look at those daily averages or we can compare that to some benchmarks across the state level. Uh, so I guess depending on what business you're working with, um, you might see some opportunities there. We're certainly aiming to use this data to inform what we do, um, with our economic development, our activation, our promotions moving forward. Some, some positive gains, um, to consider here. Um, very important, I think, which comes up a lot is how important the visitor spend is here in Lismore. And the first line here, uh, is about, is showing that we actually have, although we lost a lot of people coming to Lismore, uh, in, in that period, um, from June twenty one to June twenty two, it went down significantly. But we've actually tracking back up and there's, uh, and we're almost meeting those June twenty one levels. So, uh, this is something we absolutely want to build upon. We now have a Destination and Economy Team. And, uh, we're working with you to change the narrative and to help encourage more people to come here because that spending from outside of the local government area is very important to our businesses. However, if we look at the, uh, scape spend, then you can see that that money that the, uh, from our local community is increasing how much is going outside of the local government area year on year. Um, there are some reasons we can speculate about that, but it is, it is concerning in how we can encourage uh, more local spending and make that, um, is an important, um, discussion point that we'll be working with you towards. Another trend which, um, I hear about is happening on the national level is online spending. You probably are surprised to hear that that just goes up year on year. I was surprised to see that it didn't go up so much this year. I think it's been going up on a substantial amount the last few years. And locally, that, that, uh, that increase is less than I was expecting. Unfortunately, we can't break down where that online spend is going. We don't know how much of that is click and collect locally, for instance, during COVID. Or whether it's, you know, just in Ballina or indeed overseas. But, um, it is an important thing to track and, um, to be considering, um, with the business decisions you're making and for us, um, working to support our business community. So I've tried to keep, present some high level things. We've worked with Spendmap to look at this for Lismore for this purpose. We, we do look at this on a monthly basis and we try to, want to share these insights with you. It gives us a real sense of the pulse and what those patterns are. Um, but we really want to know in this discussion, in the feedback and the engagement coming up as we move forward, what, um, what spending insights are relevant to you. We can't drill right, right down for, um, privacy reasons, but we can certainly work with Spendmap and work with Profile I D to, um, look at those trends and start to understand the opportunities that we face. So I'll hand over to Catherine and thanks, everyone.